Although these concerns were not, and a lot of what the Board did was engage in a one-year experiment that unfortunately has not struck the balance between the needs of the environment, the needs of the neighborhood, and safe access. It's gone too far in a direction of not really meeting anybody's needs, unfortunately. I think it's very reasonable for the Board to have this discussion now, to how we can rein some of these issues back in while still providing what this Board has always said historically, before, and now that we've been on it for the last couple of years debating from dispensaries and cultivation, that we have a responsibility and a balance to meet in our community, which is, one, of safe medicinal access, and, two, is preventing the types of environmental, social, neighborhood degradation that we've seen over the last year. The Board's been very consistent in ensuring that, and I think that we've been leaders, and sometimes when you're leaders, actually, you make mistakes, and sometimes when you make mistakes, as long as you're willing to modify and correct them, then I think that it's actually something that's pretty good. You know, a lot of what today that we've heard struck me as really a false choice between either safe access or neighborhood protection. I think that is, that that mutual exclusivity does not exist in the policies of before the Board today. I think that it's predicated on one simple initial thing, which is that all of the policies before the Board, of the two options, ensure safe access, and that's taken off the table. The question is, can we do it in a way that's responsible and reasonable for the community as a whole? Because I think that we have a significant responsibility for stewardship, I think we have a significant responsibility to everybody within our community to make sure that both environmental and neighborhood needs are both met. And we also are fortunate enough to have two models with enough data to know what works and what doesn't. For example, since February of last year, we've been operating under one model, and it hasn't worked. You don't really need additional data to determine what has happened unless you consider success, environmental degradation, numerous people moving in from out of the county to do inappropriate things. And it's not a question, by the way, of enforcement, it's a question of, we can't enforce it enough, that's how big that problem actually is. Each one of these issues that the Board faces, or I should say, the staff faces, just through due process alone, to remediate any one of these grows that have been problematic, takes a really long time. Not just a lot of staff time, not just a lot of cost, but a lot of time. And when you have 150 known, so we have a lot more than that, to deal with, it's not a question of Measure K funding, it's not a question of simply enforcement, it's a question of the fact that we enacted policies that didn't work, that unfortunately, we now need to address. We have a significant responsibility to do exactly that. And in my opinion, the second data point that we had was that when this Board had a 10-by-10 personal use and not a commercial cultivation ordinance, overwhelmingly it worked. It wasn't perfect. We acknowledged that there was people, even in, and I was very vocal about this, within my district, that had converted houses, 17 people collectively growing with staple cards on a garage, and there would be a 1,700-square-foot grown residential neighborhood. Obviously, no one was really encouraging that, even throughout the community, and that was a negative externality associated with the previous policy, and that's something that's remedied before us today with a 10-by-10 proposal that doesn't allow for these kinds of homes to be taken care of. I know that it appears as though every policy choice we make has winners and losers. That's what we do. We don't get to vote maybe on policy. We don't get to vote for adding an item on discussions, we don't get to vote on that kind of stuff. And the more and more and more and more that we continue to parse some of these policies as opposed to going with things that have had historic, that we know historically have worked, the more and more and more we create the problems that we currently have. And regardless of what the Board decides to do today, there's going to be people that are disappointed with the action, that's the nature of our job. It doesn't mean we're not representing you. I mean, it's not about popularity, it's not about that, it's simply about doing what we think is the best policy for this county moving forward. And I think that that's absent politics, absent peer pressure, absent even rooms full of people. I mean, we're supposed to, we're elected here to do what's best for this community, for the people that can't come today, don't know that it's going on today if they don't, aren't even born yet, whatever it may be. Our responsibility here is to make policy for this county moving forward, and simply to do what we believe is right, and it's not an easy thing to do, but that's what we asked when we ran, and I hope that you understand that. I mean, I know, because over the last two years, most of the people in this room have told me, you don't agree with basically anything that I've set up here on this issue. I've heard that, and I've gotten emails, I've gotten the calls, and I understand and respect that we have different opinions on a lot of these issues, but I still, I still think that we can agree on two things. One, that we want to provide safe access, where we're not agreeing is how to get there. And I believe that the best policy here is what the staff is recommending in Option A. And as a result, and I'm not, by the way, in favor of any kind of increased tax, I agree with Supervisor Person, Supervisor Benner, I still think that that makes sense right now. I think that we did make a commitment in our discussions with the dispensaries initially, and I think that we should abide by that commitment because we gave our word on that. But I still think that Option A is the best option, and as a result of that, I would like to move the staff recommendation of Option A.
I'd like to, with explanation, yeah, this has been one of the toughest issues, of course, it's been one of the most longstanding ones, too, as we've mentioned, we've been talking about this for a year, we've put hundreds of hours into this, and I've talked with many of you, it's your, in your communities, and at the Board meetings itself, about how to come to something we can put in balance, which is particularly difficult if you have differing federal and state law, when you, when you see, you know, what, how can we make this mix to make the balance right? I'm not sure that the balance with this proposal, the 10-by-10, so to speak, with the Option A, is going to be the final answer. I'm particularly concerned about the, what might be available to the veterans, the Veterans Alliance, and some of the collectives, that is a concern of mine. I think that this has been a very reasonable proposal by our chief, our head staff, and planning, the Sheriff, the County Council, and the County Administrative Office. I do think that we may need to make a decision, and one thing I do know is that we can't leave it as it is today. We tried this, and it hadn't worked. Before, we had this, the 10-by-10, so to speak, it wasn't perfect either, but I do think when you, I do think this current ordinance that we have is unworkable, and I do think that when you, at this point, put public safety and environmental degradation against unbridled, unregulated grows, I, that's an easy call for me. I want to do this as early as we can, as best we can, and even with this, and at the risk of being charged with making comparison, if this is passed, we will, Santa Cruz County will be allowing the biggest personal growls in the state. And before we had the ordinance that we put into place, that's been in place for the last year, we really never had a shortage in the past where we didn't, I didn't hear that we weren't getting enough for the patients. So I think if we go back to a 10-by-10, and I think our Sheriff has given some, I hope, some comfort, he's not ready to, the office is not ready to go out and arrest everybody at this point, but on the other hand, we have to rein in what has gone wrong with the ordinance that we have in place now, and that's why I am going to support the motion, and without the tax, which we've explained.
Disgusting.
First, I want to thank everyone for their testimony. You know, we've heard a lot today, we've heard a lot over the last several years. This Board has been very interested in hearing from the public, and I think that our efforts to try to craft both dispensary legislation and cultivation legislation, that reflects our constant effort to try to listen to what's going on in the community. I also want to acknowledge the hard work of the staff, who sometimes we've told them to go long and try to find a way to make some policy with not very clear direction. I think it was June 2013 when my colleague said we should have rules for the commercial cultivation, and I don't think any of us expected what that would look like, or what it would bring into, into play as we wrestle to try to come up with some regulation. It's been very clear since the beginning of this that the community strongly supports the access to medical cannabis. That is very clear to me, and after the hours and hours and hours of testimony that we've heard, I don't remember anybody, or very few people, who actually said, we shouldn't have this available for people for the compassionate use. So that, we entered into this whole policy area with that as commitment. One of the things I've realized is that prohibition is real, and the lifting of prohibition is uneven, and as a result, it's not like the lifting of prohibition of alcohol 100 years ago. It's, it's, it means that what happens here in Santa Cruz isn't what happens in San Mateo, isn't what happens in Mendocino, isn't what happens in Nebraska. And as a result, there are pressures that are placed on our community that aren't even across the state of California or the country. And that makes coming up with a set of regulations that are effective, that meet the goals that we have, very difficult. And I admire us all for trying to figure out what that should look like, given that, because it's fairly unprecedented in this country that we have this kind of policy question, where the federal government says one thing, the state government says another thing, local counties have different sets of rules, even with inside the county, we have different set of rules. That is, that creates a very difficult environment to create a good policy. The policy that we have on the book, I know a lot about because I spent a lot of time in helping craft, and they weren't crafted simply at meetings here. I reached out to people within the cannabis community, the Farm Bureau, and we tried to take a look at this as a specialized agricultural product, and we tried to follow the rules that would identify that there were, there needed to be buffers, that we didn't want the impacts in places where you couldn't grow commercially, and I think that was an honest attempt to create a reasonable set of policies. And I think in an environment where the, where the level playing field, that's a successful policy. But it's not a level playing field because everybody has lots of different sets of rules. It's been exacerbated by the folks who choose not to share the values of probably many people in this room. They are the values of quick and easy money, they are the values that their needs are more important than the needs of the planet, the needs of the community, and the needs of even the patients. And the pictures that we have seen, there's, I don't think there's anybody in the room here who would say that was something that we would support, no matter how you feel about cannabis, no matter what kind of regulations you want, we all want that gone. And to be clear, though, whether we choose Option A, Option B, or something else, those folks are still going to be out there, and we're still need to enforce strict regulations, whatever they be, because those folks aren't really interested in what our policy is. They like our climate, they like the access to this region, they have friends here. So we need, as a community, to speak very loudly, that we do not support that activity, that we will not participate. If you're a dispensary, you won't buy from people who do that. If you're a patient, you won't, you won't purchase, or collect, or share in that kind of activity in our community. When, it was actually back in December that my former colleague, Supervisor Neil Cunnidy, had suggested that we, that we limited to agriculture and, and community agriculture or above plots, recognizing that the difficulties we were having with the existing regulation. I thought that made some sense, and I also thought that tying it to dispensaries made some sense, because I thought that of the dispensaries we have in operation, for the most part, they have been good, law-abiding entities. And in an industry where that's not always the case, they now have a record of several years where they've been doing their business without creating the problems that some envisioned would happen. They haven't created neighborhood problems, they haven't created a lot of traffic problems, they, they have not been the problem in this industry. So I thought that that was a good idea to tie it to dispensaries, because they were actors that had proven themselves to be good actors. And let me just say, I'm a little befuddled by the pushback we got, not only from cultivators, but from the dispensaries, who thought that they placed them in a role that they didn't want to be in, which is to pick the winners and losers of the cultivators. In January, we heard from this new organization, this CAA, and they, and their request was, give us more time to come up with something that's reasonable. Well, it's March. Where is your plan? It's not reasonable to keep on asking for more time and not give us some kind of sketch of what it is you want, or work collaboratively with members of the Board to come up with something that works. I think, you know, that we've, I've heard now lots of groups in the community who have started working on it, and if they had a little bit more time, they'd come up with something. But I, but I, I'm frustrated that after many months of conversation, after much debate by this Board, we've got very few written plans about what it is they do. Where do I mail my proposal? So I'm committed to continuing to work with the community to come up with something that works. I think the Option A, it's, I won't be supporting Option A. The reason I don't support it is because I think it's the reaction of the ostrich, that there's a problem that we have, and we're going to stick our head in the sand and just say that it's not going on. It is going on in our community. I would like to find a way that it can be done responsibly. We don't have an option before us that people either support or will think it work. I don't think that these personal growls are going to either meet the needs or resolve the problems that we have. So I'm interested in working with the community to try to come up with something that will work. Alan Popper being there earlier today, the most detailed of sketch of what a third-party certification program is. Let me just say that you don't need action by the Board to create a meaningful certification system to get started. You can be out in front of us, you could come back to us in a couple of months and say, here's a certification program, no, none of our dispensaries are buying for anybody who hasn't met these kind of standards, and model that kind of behavior in the hopes that we can create something that is both workable and meets the policy goals that we've identified. I care about neighborhoods, and one of the things that we said is one of our three policy goals, is we want to protect the neighborhoods. And my interest, my interest in the regulations that we have on the books is not to create large-scale corporate growing operations. I think that's, I don't think that's good. I don't think that's good on a lot of different levels, whether you're in cannabis or not. But, and we have to understand that in our county, there are different roles that different parts of the county play, and I represent a primarily urban area, and this Board, with my support, have voted to change, to take the first steps in changing our regulations to have taller buildings and greater densities in the community that I represent. That is the, that's the part that Live Oak or SoCal, that's, that's the urban area, so we're going to carry that. But if you live in an area that's zoned agriculture, I'm interested in creating a set of good regulations, safe regulations, that both protect your neighborhood and use the land as intended through a public process and designated it for agriculture-related products. I think that's possible, and I don't think that has to put us in conflict with protecting our neighborhoods. And I think that we have to figure out some way to move forward with this, rather than pretending it doesn't exist. So I challenge everybody in the room to continue to work and come up with something that's real, rather than saying, give us more time, give us more time. I don't think that's, that's completely realistic. The Board's going to vote on something today. I won't, I don't support the motion, but I appreciate the care that this entire Board has shown in wrestling with this issue, and the work that the staff has shown in wrestling with the issue. This is hard work, nobody in California has figured out it in a better way than we have. I would argue that maybe nobody in the country has figured it out better, because I've heard during this process that Colorado's got problems, Washington's probably got problems, et cetera. So we're, when you're on the cutting edge, sometimes you, you get pricked and you spill some blood, and so now we're trying to figure out how to deal with that, but I will continue to work with the community to help make that happen.
So thank you, everybody, for coming out today, and thank you for your civility and thoughtful comments. I'm relatively new to this process, I joined the Board in January, so, but I've been following the work, and I've certainly heard the concerns of my constituents and constituents around the county with the impacts on their neighborhood, and really the incompatibility between commercial grows and rural residential neighborhoods. I'm speaking against the motion, but let me just say, it's, this is not because I think that anyone up here on the Board, or our Sheriff, or the staff who put in hours and hours and hours on this, is coming at this from any other place than wanting to provide safe access to medicine and making sure that it works for members of our community who desperately need it. This is really just a difference in approach, it's not a difference in values or in substance. And the reason I'm against a ban is because I start with, what do we know? So what do we know? We know that current, the current ordinance is unworkable, the Board, I think, was trying to get out in front of an issue, got, there were no other models or no best practices to draw from, tried to develop a model, but that model, the current model, isn't working, and the problems in our neighborhoods and in our rural areas are very, very real. We also know that the federal and the state governments are moving very quickly towards decriminalization or legalization, and that the problems and the opportunities that we're seeing in Washington and Colorado will be here very, very soon. We know that with that, demand is going to increase for marijuana, and that Santa Cruz County has a long tradition of growing and utilizing marijuana, and so that demand is going to put pressure on our neighborhoods, on our agricultural lands, and on our rural areas. We also know that Santa Cruz County is an agricultural county, agriculture is the number-one employer in Santa Cruz County, and that we have a long tradition of growing things, for the most part, responsibly, growing them well, growing them often organically, and we've led the nation in that. We also know that this county has excellent rules that separate out the agriculture from our, from our neighborhoods, and that the lines that we've been able to draw through regulations have, for the most part, protected neighborhoods and worked very well. Let me just say parenthetically, and all of those who keep saying, treat us like wineries, if anyone's gone through the process of opening a winery in Santa Cruz County, I'm talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars in environmental reports, in permitting fees, and everything else, so if you're, if that's the regulatory path that you want to go on, just know that that's what you're asking for, is an unbelievably strict regulatory path for opening a winery. And the problem is, is that when you look at these trends, you look at the changing federal and the state landscape, you look at the growing demand, you look at the agricultural, you look at the regulatory rules that we have in place in Santa Cruz County, the ban doesn't recognize these trends and in many ways may work against it. One of my very real concerns is that by having the only real legal outlet, be these 10-by-10 grows, with demand increasing, that we're going to put pressure on properties to have more and more of these personal grows, that then can supply either people in the community indirectly through dispensaries or directly through the, through the black market, and then especially in our denser rural areas, it's going to cause a real problem with intensive grows, these 10-by-10 grows, which individually may not be bad, but collectively can be a real problem for a neighborhood. It also puts us, I think, a county in a very difficult position, because everybody up here wants safe access to medical marijuana, and we want to reward the good actors and punish the bad actors. Drawing those lines is often difficult, and it's going to be a very difficult challenge for our Sheriff, who's got, who really understands this community, has gone out and heard, he's been up with me in Bonneville, he's been all across this county, but it's going to put them, and the planning staff, and everyone else, in a very difficult position to pick how and when to enforce these regulations. I think that we are an agricultural county that values quality of life and values the environment, and that we can construct regulations based on zoning that recognizes where marijuana is headed in our near future. I think that the current ordinance certainly doesn't work, but I'm not sure a ban will get us there either. So that's, that's where I'm voting. I appreciate everyone's effort.
We've heard from both sides, everybody has very compelling argument. The way I look at it, I believe it's been going on for about almost two years now, was the compassion for the people that do want to use it for medical purposes. Unfortunately, what's happened here with everybody that's come here, the ones that have abused what we had the best of intentions with in the beginning, they're not here, they're obviously not here. They're the ones that have come from other areas, wanting to purchase property, or wanting to move into a neighborhood and actually destroy part of the environment there. Those people will never show up at these meetings, so we have the obligation and we have the responsibility of making a decision that will make half the people maybe agree with us and half the people won't. If, if I thought that the people that really need medical marijuana could not get it, I would say that I, you know, I still want to make sure that they do get it, that's the compassion aside, that's coming from somebody that doesn't really understand marijuana that well, they never tried it, so, but I do understand that if I was very ill, or I had a very painful or something, like cancer or whatever, I would probably try it then. So that, that's what we were talking about here. The other part is, how important is our environment, how important is what we have here in Santa Cruz County, and how are the ones who are abusing it or impacting the residential areas of our county? So that's, that's where we're really stuck here, and it's really tough. I don't always agree with one department of the county department heads, it takes turns, maybe I won't agree with planning one time, maybe I won't agree with County Council one time, maybe I'll have a disagreement with public safety, but here we have Cal Fire, we have the Sheriffs, we have the Planning Department, we have County Council, and am I leaving anybody out?
The patients!
What I'm saying is, we have, we have to go with what recommendations are, we have to, we don't have to go that way. We have to listen to them, and we have to take it into consideration. So that's how I'm going to base my vote here when we, when we vote. So I, if I understand the motion, it's for Measure A, and, but it does not include an increase in the tax, am I correct?
So right now, the motion on the floor is for the staff recommendations to approve the ordinance repealing. to approve the ordinance repealing chapter 7.126 of the county code and adopting a new chapter 7.126 prohibiting the commercial cultivation of cannabis, and presumably directing the planning department to schedule community informational workshops to educate the public on the new ordinance, and that's it?
Any other comments? Okay, we, we have the motion, and we're prepared to vote, and I want to thank everybody for being here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have a 3-2 vote.
Are we going to take a break, lunch break?
That's okay.